All right. Hello, everybody. I'm going to kick off this meeting, the September meeting of the Oak Hills Park Authority. Call to order. The right now, we do not have a quorum. We only have five members. And we only have four in attendance. I'll do the roll call. And I'll start with Alan Dutton.
Yeah.
Denise Brown.
Here.
Jennifer McAllister.
Here.
Joe Andrasco is here and TJ Tremboli is hoping to join a little bit later. So if TJ joins, he's not present right now. If TJ joins, we'll try to note the time for the minute taker. Is there a minute taker on? Is there someone from Telesco?
No, I don't see anybody, but sometimes they don't join and they get it off of the YouTube.
I see. Okay, that's fine. So, well, we'll still try to note it. And so let's go on to the item number two on the agenda, acceptance of minutes from the 8/23 special meeting. Mark, I know you sent that out earlier today. Things seem generally okay. It was just an executive session. So the only thing I wanted to note was that, ah, okay, good. Yeah. Ms. McAllister joined at 5:12 when we were already in executive session. So yeah, I mean, it was, it's pretty cut and dried. It's two pages.
It's like TJ joined, by the way, says TJ Tremboli joined us on.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah, I, I, I did. Sorry about that. I did for now. I'm stuck on the runway still of an airplane. So if I'm going to try to just at least listen in and hopefully they don't come around and tell me I can't talk. So but I, but yes, I, I am here.
Okay, great. So any, any other comments on the minutes? Any changes? Okay, can we have a motion approved?
So moved.
So move. I'll second it. Any objections? Hearing none. Let's consider those minutes approved. Excellent. Chugging along. Two minutes ahead of schedule so far. Next up on the agenda is public comment. Let me see. Do I see any?
I don't see anybody in the attendees. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see anyone else in the attendees. So we will close public comment. Report of the chair. I'll be very brief. I, you know, I, I'll just say that we again only have five members of a nine person board. It's a little tough to make a quorum. It's razor thin. And we do need some more folks. So I'd ask everybody on this call. And anyone watching on YouTube later, if you have ideas for smart people who've got a bit of energy and are dedicated to making Oak Hills Park great, then please recommend them to us. Our emails are published on the city website. So we can be contacted that way. Otherwise, we do have some committee work and some agenda items that are queued up for October. I think we've got some committees that we need to put together for a master plan and a bylaws rewrite. Those are at year five and they're supposed to be done every five years. Actually, one may have inched over to year six. So we'll put together committees to do that, but I, I, to me, it makes more sense to do that when we have more full membership. When we actually have brains and fingers to be able to do that work. So I'm going to pause that and table that until at earliest October to kind of set up chairs and membership of those committees. And then we have a couple of other orders of business that'll come are kind of limited in when they can be taken up and we'll take them up in October. So otherwise, you know, I think the management reports and the committee reports will do most of the talking for how the park is going. But I'm loving the direction we're going. I mean, I saw the financials, Mark, and you know, the management reports were great. It was wonderful to put them in writing and actually include them for the public agenda. So looking forward to see how this meeting kind of goes with this kind of new approach to bringing it together. So without any further ado, I'll close the, the report of the chair and we can launch into management reports. And we'll start with Paul. Hi, Paul.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Nice to see you all. Well, now that the hundred day war is over and that is the hundred day period in the golf business we refer to as the hundred day war between Memorial and Labor Day, where we pretty much work our hardest, spend the most hours at the club and, you know, the majority of the income for most golf facilities are raised then. But golf at Oak Hills Park seems to be doing very well as we move into the golf season. We're still seeing lots of golfers coming to the club. We see full tee sheets. And even though there's the rising cost of inflation, the start of school, the beginning of the NFL and college football seasons does not seem to deter these golfers from playing at Oak Hills Park. So we do have some loyal customers returning from, you know, far as way as, you know, the Five Burrows. I would say the only thing that is kind of limiting us in T sheet revenue would be just the sun's going down a little bit earlier. And sometimes when someone can't play 18 holes, they kind of don't play quite as much. So, but anyway, the weather's been great and due to the lack of rain, we really haven't had any rain outs. We contribute some of these full T sheets to continuing influx of new golfers to our area and, and people moving to our area. Obviously, COVID-19 has really helped fuel the golf business. And the ability to work remotely. So we're seeing lots of people still play golf. So it's good for the course and we've had some really, really good golf course conditions. People are really happy. Considering we've been really experiencing a little bit of drought. So we're seeing just a little bit of slip Friday afternoon, Saturday, maybe Sunday evenings as far as T sheet there. But we're looking into some really good golf continuing for the, because now we're getting to a great time of year, the fall, where everybody loves to play when it's a little cooler. But during the last 30 days, we've only had one outing, which was very successful. August is always a slow month for outings, dedications, back to school activities, Labor Day, travel. A large majority of our 2022 outings have all expressed interest in holding their outing again for the 2023 golf season. We have seven outings still on the schedule for the rest of the year. We have a few mini golf events, a couple of tournaments and some small groups coming to Oak Hills. So we've completed the men's and women's club championships and we only have the men's Governor's Cup final match to be played as well as the fourth annual junior club championship this Sunday. We're going to have probably 45 kids there. And it'll be a big turnout because lots of parents are coming and we hope to have a little food and beverage after with awards at Smoke and Ace's restaurant. Our authority member TJ Tremboli defeated his brother in the club championship. Bobby Tremboli won last year, but I, and the year before, but I think TJ had won a couple of years before that. So those guys, a lot of competition between the two brothers. Cindy Scope was our defending ladies' club champion. And we've really had a big year with some junior golf. So right now we're seeing a lot of families come out and play a lot of golf at Oak Hills together. Oak Hill Men's Association, the golf association would complete their tournament season, the first week of October. We've been meeting monthly to discuss golf events for next year and ways to improve player participation for next season. The two nine and dine events that were done this summer were really successful and they actually helped bring in some new members to the association. I think we'll continue that for next year. And it's been discussed to add a member, member golf event, a possible member guest and even a Ryder Cup event next year. And our ladies golf association probably has two or three events as well. Then the season will probably be over for them. Brian McMahon and Norwalk High School have been playing a lot at Oak Hills. They play four days a week. So if they're not having practices, they have matches. And our new T sheet POS system has been working pretty well with golf now and they've really helped tremendously. And it's obvious to see how they continue to drive a lot of golfers to Oak Hills from all over the place. And I think our carts are in their second year and they're really clean, good shape, running well. The club car mechanics are great. They come every week. Just make sure they're in pretty good condition. And the golf shop are having an end of summer golf sale going on now. And we presently have 28 people on our golf staff down from the mid 30s peak summer. During the 22, 2022 golf season, we've hired actually a total of 20 new members, which I'm really proud about because we all know how hard it is to hire people in this day and age. But this ensures that all the shifts are covered and things really run smoothly at the golf course. And we're planning a golf staff event, October 6th with the dinner to follow. So during the next 30 days, as we really get into the fall golf season, I really think we're going to see plenty of golfers continue to play at Oak Hills. It's the most pleasant time of year. And I think as the weather changes, our newly completed cart pass should be a big help for the remaining end of the season. And so, so far, it looks like it's been, you know, fairly another good, successful golf season at Oak Hills Park. And if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer anything if you like.
And not over yet, right? Yeah. Any questions for Paul?
So Paul, staffing wise, we're good, right? We're seeing now in the end of the year and, oh, end of the season and stuff like that. No issues. Kids going back to school and stuff like that.
No. Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Got some really good news, staff members.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. But that would be it for me.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Next on the list is Jim.
All right, guys. Everything's pretty good with the course right now. Thank God for the rain. You know, I've, I've always been told that the irrigation system is only supposed to get us from one rain event to the next as a, as an assist to Mother Nature. And this year is proof. There's no doubt. It's it's pretty hard to do it with just an irrigation system, but we've gotten enough rain where most everything's come back. There are some spots. I'm not going to say there's not. But we'll work on those. We'll, we'll get them back. And I think at this point, after this past season, with the lack of water, we're doing pretty well. Staffing continues to be a problem. We've got a couple temps. I did get one new guy who's going to be pretty reliable and, and he's got a lot of know-how. He used to be a superintendent at another course. He's just kind of on staff. He's like semi-retired kind of guy. It's good to have. I have received some quotes for some projects in the capex budget and a couple of the ones that I think need to get done sooner than later are the boiler in the old pro shop and the fence behind the 14th green. Now I got, I got two fences bid, but I was way off on my estimate of how much it would cost. I, I don't know that I've ever gotten bids on fence work. So anyway, the, I think I quoted or I had estimated $6,000 for the bid in the pro shop and the low bid is $7,000. So I don't know if we need to vote on that to go over the amount that I had estimated on the capex budget. But that's one of them. And then, I mean, you guys have the, the agenda and it's all written down there. I am about 4,900 shy to do one fence on 14 as opposed to a 14 and behind the house. Slightly off on that one. But these are two things that, you know, the fence behind 14 is falling into the road if the trees weren't there. And they're checking out. The trees are, you know, in pretty bad shape. It, it needs to get replaced. The guy that I got, I got three bids for the fence. And one of them, the low bid for the one behind 14 is also a basin. So he assures me he's not going to have a problem putting the fence back in the wall that's behind the green. And I think that's a fair price. That, well, as far as I know, I mean, if we compare it to the other bids I got, you, you can read it there. It's, you know, almost $100,000 to do two short fences from one guy and then two guys were competitive. So it seems like it's reasonable. Anyway, I did get the first bid for the rental unit kitchen. And of course, again, that was high by about $2,800 compared to what I had originally thought it would cost. But that's not, you know, we're not, not in a major hurry on that one. They provided me plans for it. They provided me the layout, the, the materials that are going to be used. So now I can go ahead and get other quotes that will be apples to apples to him. And I think he's going to end up being the winner, but we'll see on that one. I also, I remember last meeting I had mentioned about getting a weather station. And the verbal quote that I got from the guy was, of course, low. But it was in exchange for a cart that was on the commercial debt schedule that I was scheduled to get in 2223. The price now for this weather station is $6592.16. I, if I remember correctly, we didn't vote on that before, but I just wanted to run it by you guys to let you know that that's what it is. I am replacing the purchase of a new cart, a utility cart with the purchase of this weather station, which can help me save on water tremendously. So let's see, all the other projects on the list are not so weather and time critical. And I'll work in there on them as, as we slow down a little on the golf course. One last note, our fairway mowers, they're actually due at the dealers on October 13th. That's not a promise, but that is what I saw on a piece of paper that he took a photo of and sent me. So so I guess what I'm asking for while we have a quorum is a vote on the boiler before the weather gets cold and a vote on the extra cost for the fence behind 14 green. They're both over the allotted budget. And if anybody has any questions, please.
Yeah, we'll take that up under new business.
Okay. All right. One other thing I want to mention is we've been getting a load of complaints about our bunkers. And while we did them, or a lot of them anyway, in 2015 and 2016, many of those have aged faster than possibly we'd like, or they should, but partially because we don't have irrigation on some faraway sections, far away from the greens, that is, where the heads around the greens can water them and keep them in fair shape, at least around the edges. Part of it is because we've had a ton of heavy rainfalls in the last four or five years as opposed to frequent and light. And that helps to wash out the bunkers. And what happens when they wash out is soil erodes off of the faces or the sand falls down into the bottom of the bunker. And then the soil follows it. It erodes off of the banks down into the bottom of the bunker. It contaminates the sand. Rocks from the soil migrate into the sand. There's really a lot of people saying, well, just put new sand on top, but that is extremely temporary. I mean, two weeks later, we're right back where we started. We've done it before. I've done it in other courses. It's not a solution. So we need to start talking about, and I'm, I'm going to work on it. I'm going to get square footages. I'm going to get some ideas of what a ballpark figure would be to line these bunkers with like a capillary concrete or a gravel bed that is essentially glued together on the bottom to prevent all this kind of stuff from happening. So just as a note, we're going to be talking about that more after tonight. And otherwise, I don't have nothing else to mention here.
So Jim, when we look at the capital budget, do we look at it at its entirety? Because I'm meeting with you guys on Now Wednesday, I think, right? To talk about the capital. But, and obviously there's priorities, there's things need to get done earlier rather than later. But, you know, obviously certain things are more important than others.
Right.
I understand, but I'm just wondering if we should kind of look at it more globally to a certain degree to see, you know, you know, just from a priority point of view, I understand the boiler needs to get done and the fencing behind 14 needs to get done and stuff like that. But maybe we might be able to take, you know, money from somebody else. You've got golf simulators out there. You've got a lot of other things. So just want to put that on the table, you know. So on Wednesday, I'll probably have a better idea about exactly what's, you know, what's going on and what's, what's important. So.
Absolutely. I agree. I mean, there's definitely a spot or two where we could sacrifice some items to make some of these more important things to happen.
Yeah.
And Jim?
Yeah.
What kind of fencing are you putting up? Is it like the chain link fencing?
Yes, it's a, instead of the, like, the mesh on the tennis court has standard size diamonds, if you will. But on the golf course, it has to be an inch and a quarter. So balls can't go through it out onto the road or into somebody's backyard or whatever. It'll be, it'll be black chain link fence. I think that that's just, everybody's using the black fence these days. It's kind of incognito.
Were these any of the companies that you spoke with when you were looking at the other quotes for the fencing for the golf balls?
No. Thank goodness. Oh, that, that's different. That would be netting. These guys don't do the netting.
Okay.
These are strictly fence companies.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Jim or thoughts on Jim's report? Jim, after we hear the financial report, I think we'll be in a better spot to, and ask Mark questions, we'll be in a better spot to kind of take up the holistic questions that you raise about the expense.
Sure.
Okay, on a mark. Hi, Mark.
All right. So everyone already saw the report that I put that Joe put out on the agenda there. And I'm waiting on the updated audit report. It is on its way. I'm going to send another note to the auditors tomorrow morning. And then I'm moving on to our line of credit extension, which will be over the next month and a half. We've continued on with our debt payments to the city of Norwalk for repayment of our debt as normal. And as we've already discussed, we're having a capital improvements meeting this Wednesday, which is great. It's great to have Alan here to get a little hands on and have us all sit down and discuss and maybe reprioritize and, and, and then get a game plan, which would be great. As Joe already alluded to, you know, the financial activity for the first two months of this new fiscal year. Very good, very good. Both July and August have been strong months, delivering revenues well over budget. Our year-to-date, we, we've had 12,000 revenue rounds, which beats prior year by 9% and budget by nearly 12%. And cart rentals and ID card sales are also above budget. So everywhere in the revenue line, for the most part, we, we're, we're looking very, very strong. The preliminary year-to-date revenues, $110,000 over budget. And that is offset by an expense overage of $15,000, which does include $20,000 overage in water expense, right? So that's, that's the offset to all these great rounds that Paul and Jim are talking about, you know. You do have dry hot conditions that, that, that do create a lot of need to, to, to have city water come in. And, and we do have to pay for that, obviously. So, but at least in regards to the, the golf course, that is, the dryer conditions are, are, are good for revenue, but bad overall. We need a little more rain. Year-to-date net operating income is $95,000 over budget. So it puts us in an extremely attractive position. We're starting off really strong. And the next few months as well look pretty good. October, November, sorry, September, October should be, should be very good. So no complaints, no complaints from finance. Anybody have any questions on any, any of that activity?
Um, I do, Mark. I saw that for August, the revenue for the restaurant was about $16,000.
It, it's, it's very misleading. That is Q4 2022 FY22 revenue. That, that's technically June revenue for the April through June quarter. I didn't get the, the details and, and final numbers from Don until late in August. So, you know, it's bad in the sense that we technically are, you know, we're, we're, we had less revenue than we should have reported in FY22. But on the positive side, it's, we're, it's an extra $16,000 that we, that we hadn't planned on. And it's now in both the cash and, and revenue will be part of this current fiscal year.
So that revenue is from the previous quarter is what you're saying?
That revenue is from the period April 1st through June 30th of 2022. So we're going to see more revenue that I'm going to accrue for at the end of September for the first quarter of this year, which is July 1 through September 30th.
Okay.
All right. Joe, you're muted.
Yeah, I know. I'll get good at this someday. Okay, chugging along on the agenda, going to go into committee reports and we've got four. So we'll start with tennis and Denise.
Hi, everybody. So Kings Highway now is out of the, the Oak Hills tennis courts. And so they left about two weeks ago and they're pretty much cleared out their stuff. They did leave things behind in the office. So I don't, they did, I think they also came back this past weekend and cleared out a little more stuff, but I don't think that's really going to be a problem. So it's mostly old balls and carts and things like that. So the good news though, is that the tennis program that I put together was advertised through the Norwalk Public School System and it went really well. I sold four clinics out for the kids and one adult clinic. And then I've added on another clinic for the kids that are going to start next week. So it really went well with the public schools. They were very, you know, welcoming to the program. They sent it out. I sold it out in a week. I had everything set up with 121 marketing for the website. So that went really well. Paul, I was dealing with a young woman who was, I think she was new to the program, but she did a really good job. So I really commended her for that. So she got this done like in maybe three days. So it was really pretty good. I was very happy. And we brought in for the fundraising about $2,500 for the, for this program. I think that's after paying the coaches and all the little supplies that we had to buy. So that's pretty good. So I'm not quite sure where we stand, Mark, with the money that's in the account. I think maybe we have about $2,500 in there already. But I'm not exactly sure.
After we paid the rest of the patio, I thought it was down pretty far. And I, I, I know you said you were going to stop in. Is there additional money that you were going to come in with?
Yeah, I have about another thousand to put in, which is from the tournament we had on Labor Day and then the weekly drop in money that we keep collecting. So that's probably going to be about $1,000 to $1,200. So most of the money that came in is in PayPal for the tennis program. So I don't know if that's money you have to move over or what, you know, where that sits right now.
Okay, I know Els, I believe, went ahead and did a bunch of those. So I can, I can touch base with her and ask her to do if there's any more in there.
Okay, well.
But it does, it does sound like, it sounds like you, yeah, we bet a couple thousand dollars then, current balance. That's pretty good.
Right, so that's pretty good. Um, so I've also been in touch with a um, ATP pro who was on the circuit, retired. And he's going to come on board to teach a couple of kids this fall. Uh, his name is Chris Mayotte. I don't know if anybody is familiar with him. Uh, but he's a professional player and he's really interested in kind of coming into Oak Hills and getting familiar with the programs that we're offering, at least. In some way, and he wants to offer his services uh, in the offseason. It won't be something he'll do once King's Highway has their lease and their um, program running. Uh, so he's really excited to kind of just learn more about Oak Hills. He is a native of Norwalk. He was running the um. Program in Rhode Island for the um. I just went blank on, but it, you know, it is the um. Newport. Uh, series for, it's for like retired tennis players and stuff where it, they kind of promote. And bring them in, they're the Hall of Fame players and they, they nominate players every year, so he's been part of that program, but now he's back in Norwalk. So he's gonna be helping just to kind of get more people involved on the courts. So I think that's really very nice of him to do that. And we were looking into putting on um, an awning over the new patio that we put in. I, we received a few quotes. I don't know, is that something I have to find out if we need a permit for because. There will be posts put in and it will be a stable. Structure. So I don't know much about installation of it and how, what I need to do to find out more about it.
Pretty sure if it's gonna be a permanent structure, it needs a permit.
Yeah.
So we're looking into having a, um, an awning that might be retractable or. Might be just seasonal and go up in the spring and come down in the fall. Not quite sure. Uh, so that's one project we were thinking of doing. We're also thinking of maybe continuing the walkways to the other courts with that. Paver stone that we put in for the patio, so I was getting quotes on that. And we were just thinking of. Possibly doing some landscaping, but I really feel that the landscaping should wait until we actually get. Certain projects done and completed, because I think that the landscaping will, you know, not be beneficial. Until we get some of the other projects done. Um, so we're seeing, you know, we're constantly trying to bring in money, raise money. It's a couple of thousand here, a couple of thousand there, so. That's kind of our goal is just to keep on going. So we plan to keep the courts busy until hopefully November Jim. Into, even into November, if the weather is permitting. You know, like maybe up to Thanksgiving, that's my goal, if the weather is cooperative.
Right.
Right, okay. And. That's kind of it for the moment. With everything that's going on.
John.
Any questions?
And for me, a good report.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
So for all those things, you'll kind of research, well, I guess this is a question. For, you'll research whether need permits, but it seems like likely, and then bidding it out will come back to the authority.
Well, we can, we can accumulate bids and then bring them to the authority. If you were disapproved and BODA.
Um, but if the funds are coming from supporters of tennis.
Right.
Then I think it's just conceptually, Oak Hills, the authority is voting, do we want to do that work? And, you know, I think that's fine. We can, we can make that determination. Uh, but it's, it, it's not gonna be, you know, do we want to do it for that price? Because it technically wouldn't be the authority's money. It would just be, is that what we want to do with this, the physical plant of the.
Well, one of the things that I would like to look into is the money that Mark was saying has been put aside. That we possibly can use that's been accumulating based on our lease we had. Um, the lease is written so that it's about nine thousand dollars a year. That we're into our second year, so which we're looking at maybe around eighteen thousand dollars, but Mark, you had thought it might be a few thousand more than that.
Uh, we, 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 we have uh, allocated twenty-two thousand for this current fiscal year to tennis improvements.
Okay, um, we would, you know, if we go ahead with these projects and they work out, we would definitely be tapping into some of that money. So.
Sure. And that's where I, I know Alan and you, we're gonna sit together and discuss as well, cause uh. After our meeting on Wednesday, if you guys have not already met, we can, there can be a secondary meeting on the tennis portion.
Yeah, we, I haven't met with Alan.
We can do that.
We can do that, yeah.
We can have a joint restaurant meeting Denise, haha.
Oh, boy. Okay, any other questions?
I drive past every about three or four times a day. I go past the courts and it's, it's a great, you know, there's a. You know, there's people, obviously after, you know, Labor Day, it's no longer more um, King's Highway, but it's great on the weekends to drive past to see the courts fall. It's really great.
I actually think it's better without King's Highway there, but that's just.
I agree. When is that lease up? Another three years or something, or how long do you have to go?
Yeah, we got three more years. So, we'll see.
Alright, thank you Denise. Uh, next up is Restaurant Committee, Alan.
Restaurant Committee, hmm, that's me at this moment in time. Um, I have uh, reached out to um. One of our committee members here to see if uh, would like to join me, so I'm just waiting to hear back on that. Um, I do have a couple of ideas, thinking that uh, I, I'd like to reach out to some um. Uh, golfers and to tennis players and to people who use Oak Hills to come on to our committee. It doesn't have to be just uh. Oak Hills Park Authority members, right, Joe? It can be um, outsiders as well.
Norwalk residents, yeah.
Norwalk, Norwalk residents. Um, so I'd like to ask, um, you know, Paul especially if there are. You know, any, anybody that we think would be appropriate to come on to the Oak Hills Restaurant Committee. Um, I'd be happy to chat to them and just to see. Um, because I think that, you know, the, the more people not, you know, maybe two or three would be the most. Um, the other thing I'm looking at is I'd like to do a, uh, like a survey monkey. I'd like to go out and um. Perhaps using, is it one-on-one marketing or whatever, just to. Put together a survey like about five, six, seven, eight questions, just to get some, um, and send it out to the people and see. You know, what they say, because I think it's, 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 it's a good, you know, forum for us to find out what people are thinking about. Obviously you'll hear, you know, good, bad, ugly, but I think it's just something we, that we can build on. So I would like to do that. Joe, I did get the uh, you know, the, the marked up version of the restaurant. Um, a bit of it lacks and there are like, just a couple of. Changes that I need to send back to you or recommendations that I have. Um, nothing, you know, just some changes on times. Um, you know, during the week, um, rather than seven days a week, maybe Tuesday through Sunday. Um, I should be able to get those, you know, back to you within a couple of days, so I can kind of finalize that document. So kind of really in the formative modes of getting the committee off the ground at the moment, obviously when we have more people on the. Commission, on the authority, that would help us out a lot, I think, so it's where we're at.
Is Don usually, is he around?
Um, I haven't, you know, I'm not, I haven't been there a lot recently. I'm planning to be there a lot more. Um, now that I'm not working anymore. Um, I'm not sure, to be honest with you. I know he has a restaurant manager there. A, a, a woman who works there, but I'm not sure how often. Uh, Paul, you probably know about anybody else. How, how often Don is there? Any, 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 uh, what's your feedback on that, Paul?
I'd say once a week for a few moments, that's about it. Yeah, we don't see him. I don't even think, yeah, I don't think some of the staff sees him. He hasn't really been there.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm up there quite frequently and I haven't seen him once up there. This is TJ. I haven't, I haven't seen him once up there. And I've had, and I have been in the restaurant a few times and, and eating there and stuff and have, have definitely have not seen him. I've seen him around town, but just not, not at Oak Hills.
Probably canvassing, right TJ?
I guess so.
Alright. Any other questions for Alan?
Is the restaurant open seven days?
It's not open on Mondays, I don't think, because uh, you have golf outings on Mondays, so I, I don't believe it opens on Mondays, which I think is fine, to be honest with you. Am I right, Paul?
Uh, not usually open on a Monday, no. And uh, sometimes, you know, they're there for the outing, other times. Uh, they're not involved with the outing.
Okay, um. Next we have Supporters of Oak Hills Park, Jerry.
Uh, yes, uh, for anybody that's not familiar with uh, what goes on. Uh, Mark uh, is gracious enough on his own time to put the financial uh. Uh, numbers together for the activity that happens uh. Within the supporters of people who donate money to Oak Hills. And uh, what we do is we break it down into two categories. One is. What we call unrestricted cash, which is when people make a donation, they don't target it. Uh, for golf, for tennis, uh, or uh, for the nature. And uh, the other one is restricted cash that we have in the bank. And that is for those uh, areas where people have. Uh, said, that's where I want my money to go. So as of the end of June or the end of the fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-two. We had a total uh, assets of eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Of uh, that restricted cash was fourteen thousand, four twenty-eight. Uh, twenty-six, and the majority of that is uh, the tennis. Right? And that's, that's because of Denise's hard work of uh, getting volunteers to donate the money. And the unrestricted cash, which is four thousand dollars, which uh, you know, if you. Uh, come up with some ideas and you need a few, few dollars, up to four thousand, uh, just. Present that and we'll see if we can get the money to you.
And, and two, two things. Number one, just as, as Denise mentioned before. Uh, that, the, the bulk of that balance though unfortunately is, has gone down uh, due to the, the finishing up of the patio. Uh, for, for the tennis fund, but you know, that is something that, that's a good point, Jerry, cause when we have our meeting on Wednesday for, for capital expenditures. You know, if we, you know, to, to fill in the thousand dollar underage on, on a boiler, that's what the, that's what the, the supporters. Fund is there for. It's just a communication between us and, and the, the board of the supporters to make sure everyone's in agreement with it, so. That is definitely something we, we can and should discuss.
That's good, thanks, Bob.
It's a great point. So that's it. Tell all your friends, you know, if they wanna donate somebody's memory or donate because they have extra cash or whatever. I appreciate all the hard work people do uh, for the course. Uh, we are very receptive to donations.
Five oh one C three status, right?
Yes.
That's deductible, okay, great.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yep.
And finally, we have Audrey with the Nature Advisory Committee.
Hello, everyone. And just nice to hear how well the park is doing, golf, et cetera, and I wanna. First and foremost, give a shout out to Jim for the lovely uh, little fountain that we have now in the fountain garden. Long time in coming and, and it's really a little sparkle to add to that nature area. Um, yeah, I, I wanted to just, you know, kind of give in and overarching um. Theme to, to my report, which is uh, that the nature, the fourteen and a half acres of. The nature center that comprises part of Oak Hills Park is just a different, a different animal from the rest of the park. It's not. A moneymaker, it's not uh, game, game playing in terms of golf, you know, it's not recreational in that sense. It's more. Uh, I think more like a kind of a state park, you know, with woodland trails and open space. It's just a little bit different. Which is why I've been looking for um, some uh, assistance possibly with the Norwalk Land Trust. In terms of a possible conservation easement to protect that property. It's unprotected property. So someday, I guess, uh, you know, it could be open to development, which would be a shame. So we recently had some vandalism on the trail. Um, we have some graffiti. Uh, on one of the trees in our beautiful, healthy woodlands. Uh, this is um, something that other uh, city properties have experienced really for the first time. Uh, in Norwalk, the first taxing district, one of their parks had uh, graffiti for the first time. And the Norwalk Land Trust as well, their beautiful Farm Creek Preserve in Rowayton. Not only had graffiti, but had uh, trees cut down and uh, and some real damage. Um, so this is sort of first time stuff. I don't know what's going on with, I assume, young people today. I don't know what to say. Uh, we're gonna go, uh, we've been researching, the committee's been researching how to remove that. Spray paint from the tree without damaging the tree, so we're gonna attempt, I think, starting this weekend to remove it with uh, rags soaked with olive oil and. Scrapers and apparently it lifts the paint away from the tree bark. Also, the, the park's horticulturist had made some nice recommendations for us in terms of moving and shifting some plants around, so. Definitely gonna take Anthony up on some of his uh, wise and sage uh, advice. Um, so an update on the ever-source replanting over there. Uh, where the pine trees were taken out a winter ago. Um, Ever Source is still stalling. Um, on the remediation. Um, so Paul Sotnick, who's one of our engineers at DPW. And, and our assistant tree warden here in the city of Norwalk, he's been after Ever Source gently nudging. Uh, to get them to remediate that area and a beautiful planting plan through the, the tree advisory committee, so. Hopefully that will happen and, and add some um. Uh, you know, a little bit of, of beauty on, on the roadway and to the park. Um, we've got some fall and winter events we wanna do in the nature center. Um, there's something known as forest bathing that's become quite popular. Uh, it's, it's a practice that uh, is uh, shown to lower blood pressure. And lower heart rates and be very healing for people in stressful situations, so we wanna. Try and position our woodlands a little bit as a site. In Japan, where it originated, there were physicians who prescribed forest bathing for their patients. And the, the country of Japan has set aside forty-five forests in the country specifically for forest bathing. So it's got kind of catching on here, so we're gonna try and catch a little wave. Um, so in closing, I would love to set up a, a meeting with Joe. Uh, to talk about how, how we might structure the Nature Advisory Committee going forward. Um, I have three ex officio members to that commit, our committee. Um, we have Lisa Shanahan, who's Common Council District D. Um, I also have Elsa Obashowski. Uh, who's also our support, one of our supporters folks. And um, Mary Verrill, who's a, a vice president of the Norwalk Land Trust. She's interested in joining the Oak Hills Park Authority, so that could be a real boon for, for the park. Um, and Dominique Johnson from Common Council. So we've got some interesting uh, people sort of interested in protecting the property. Um, really make it, keeping it a, a healthy gem, very unusual for such a suburban area. Um, and I'd love to get together with Jim to talk about, I know we've got some uh, funds in the budget now for. Materials and also for crew time and, and try to figure out maybe with Anthony, following through on some of his nice recommendations. How we can go forward and um, I guess I'd like to find out what's the mechanism to bring this forward, so that I can meet. To start creating a, a stronger nature advisory committee and also to uh, make sure that we have. The ability to um, do some of the modest things that we wanna do on that property, so I would like some advice on, on that.
So Audrey, I know Mary Verrill very well. I, I lived in Rowayton for thirty-two.
Oh, yes, and you know Lisa, don't you? I think Lisa Shanahan, I think Lisa's.
Yeah, yeah, I know Lisa as well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're all board members of the Land Trust, Mary.
Yeah, we're all board members of the land trust, Mary, Lisa, myself, and a lot of others. The land trust, you know, own, has either acquired or manages over a hundred acres of protected open space and woodlands in Norwalk. It's really phenomenal. And, you know, we want to make sure that these woodlands, which the state forester says is incredibly healthy, we want to make sure that's protected. It's a jewel in the cap for the park.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, Audrey, this is something that I've spoken to a couple of people at the land trust about already. Very nascent, very early, as well as you. And, you know, I think those conversations just have to continue. We have to set up a way to make sure that we're having them periodically. And, you know, it'll be a joint decision, obviously. The authority taking the lead on any decisions that happen with that. But certainly under the advisement of the city, because we do not actually own, right? So we, we're renters on this final end. So those decisions actually aren't purely left to us. So it's gonna have to be a several party path forward. But I think we just, you know, keep talking and it's not going to be instant. But it's, it's something that we'll, we'll try to make progress on and see if there's, see if there's real virtue in the, the, coming to that conclusion of the conservation easement.
Yeah, let's see what can be. And from discussion, that's very, sounds like a very healthy start. Thank you. Thank you all.
Audrey, I have one question. Would you mind checking with Elsa? Back when we did the project on the whole property, I could have sworn that that area had already been protected from development.
Well, you know.
Elsa might know something about that, but, you know, I can't be a hundred percent sure. I, I, I don't know.
I know Elsa and I and a small group had, when we first formed this committee, it was actually like twenty people on it. But we had a meeting with Alexis at the city, Chair Chetty, and there was no protective status whatsoever. So when I talked to Alexis, maybe a month and a half ago, she said, nothing. So it's, it's hanging out there. It's healthy. I don't think anybody's got any designs on it. But, you know, I think there's something that we could do. We'd probably qualify for more grant funds, or certainly if the land trust was involved, they, they have some funding. You know, there, there are other ways that we might be able to collaborate, which I think, I don't think it's fair for the authority actually to, to try and take on that enormous property, to try and steward that. That's an enormous undertaking. That's how I feel about it. It's, it's really, I don't think it's reasonable to expect the authority to, to steward that. And I just have a handful of interested people who want to protect it. And let's see what can be. Let's see how we can collaborate perhaps with some other groups.
I agree. In regard to, to coordinating the, the small budget that's now in, in our, in our financials, I mean, I can continue doing what I've done before, kind of acting like a liaison. If it's something small like, like the fountain that, that Jim just bought for the fountain garden, birdhouses or something like that, you know, we can have those discussions in the nature committee meetings. And then I could talk with Jim, because it's technically, it's his budget. So he's, he's in charge of the spend on that and so forth. So but, but it's, as you said, I think that, that would be the, I think, the, the, the communication. If, if that works for everyone.
Right. I don't think there's a lot of materials necessary. There's some handrails, there's some, the entrance and exit points are a little bit dangerous. Hate to see anybody fall and break their neck on it. But I think it's all fairly modest. It's more sort of grunt work on and off, only a couple of times a year. And I think we can get volunteers, but we could also use some crew time if there is any. That's all. However, that happens, we just try. It's, you know, if we let it go, it's, that's fine too. Nature would be happy with that, whatever we can bring to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey.
Audrey, I do have a question for you.
Sure.
Isn't there grant money that was coming into the city of Norwalk for parks?
Yeah, we're not part of Wreckin Parks.
So it's only for Wreckin Parks, which means Oak Hills Authority isn't part of it. Oak Hills Park is not a part of that either?
No, we're not under the jurisdiction of Wreckin Parks. Where Oak Hills Park is a freestanding enterprise, as far as, you know. Yeah, bummer. Maybe that, you know, everything can be changed. It really depends on how we all wish to go forward and what, what can be. You know, I'm a firm believer in things being malleable, depending to suit, you know.
If there's no objections, I'm gonna ask to close committee comments. We're now running eleven minutes behind. So thank you, Audrey. Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna move on to old business, new business. And it sounds like not a lot of old business. But Jim, now that we've heard the finances and we were reminded of supporters' funds that might be available, let's tee up again the idea of, I guess, kind of a holistic conversation around these capital expenses and financing, I guess. There's some, there's some financing to do there if it's the weather station, unless that's an outright buy. So I'll make a motion to discuss the financial considerations made in the superintendent's report. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Any objections? Well, we just need a second to, to, to consider a motion. So Jim, you want to kind of, sorry to have you repeat yourself and it's there in writing, so we can kind of follow along. But what's the, what's the right way to think about these? Are individual things boiler and as one fences as another rental unit?
These are things I feel are, there are things I feel that are a must at this point. The boiler, I had estimated that it would cost six thousand dollars, because that was the quote I got a couple of years ago when it broke down.
Yeah.
And actually, it came in at seven thousand dollars, which is quite good. The next lowest bid was almost double that.
Yeah.
So I feel that that should be a go. I mean, I just don't think we're gonna do any better.
Mark, was there, is this CapEx or OpEx?
This is CapEx.
CapEx.
And the budget then was six thousand?
Yes.
And, and reminder to Mark how we're doing on CapEx budget or CapEx versus budget in the first two months?
We're a little under. We haven't spent much at all yet. And that, that's the best, I, I think, and I, I forget the exact, every nature of your, of the rules that you wrote up, Joe, the policy. But for me, going over, you know, something that's in the budget for this year, going over a thousand dollars, I, I think we don't need to, to vote if we want to go over a thousand in total for the total budget for the year. We can always maneuver the details. That's, that's not, you know, with, with Alan and everything, we can choose to spend more or less within there, I believe, without going to an official vote.
Okay, I'm just gonna keep a tally of, of kind of what the overage is would be, right? Because this is boiler, one thousand over, right? So we can just kind of take this holistically when we get there. Because this is kind of four things that holistically contribute to higher spend. At least that's how I'm thinking of it right now. Because if we just take these individually and say, well, that's a thousand, that's eighteen hundred, pretty soon it's death by a thousand cuts and we're, you know, eighteen grand over budget. And we do that every month and it gets, it gets bad.
I'm sorry, Joe. Just one thing on that. Just my, I guess my point was that we can choose to then say, okay, we're not going to spend eighteen thousand dollars on the front entrance house or whatever. So we can always maneuver without, without going over our budget in total.
There's prioritization is important, guys. And if we find, we need to spend the money on the budget, on the boiler, yes, we need to, we have to do the fence, I agree. These are things we may be X number of thousand dollars over. But as we move further along, maybe we can cut out something or reduce the scope of something to get us to where we want to be, you know?
Yeah. And I'm also.
We're definitely gonna get there. I mean, there, there are some things after reconsideration of, of everything that's on this list that may not have to be done. I mean, I'd, I'd actually like one of you guys to come and take a peek at a couple of these things. And maybe we can do that Wednesday, Alan, if you have.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I'm also talking, because there's a capital expense conversation that's happening between Paul, Mark, Jim and Alan in the coming days. So, you know, for some of these capital expenses, I'm not sure if, you know, if there's a broader prioritization conversation to happen, then, you know, maybe we have to wait until that conversation happens. But Jim, it sounds like you're saying some of these things, the fence, the boiler, the kitchen. They are going to end up on the high priority list.
Oh, I'm not, that's, this is one of the things that I want somebody's input on. I mean, after Elena moved out of the apartment and I went in there with a contractor to take a peek around, the kitchen isn't all that horrible. It's antiquated for sure and it needs updating. But it is very livable. Maybe there's a couple of things we can do to change it, to make it better, that doesn't require such a huge investment. And that's, I want somebody else's opinion.
So Jim, let me come in on Wednesday. Just take a look at it, if that's okay.
Yeah.
I've not been in, seen the outside, not seen the inside yet. I like to maybe refer back to, to, to the authority.
Absolutely, absolutely. I would like that.
So we'll table that kitchen conversation.
Right. The other conversation was the fence behind fourteen. These are things I'm ready to move on now. And, and I had estimated that the fence behind fourteen and the fence behind the rental house, total guesstimate was twelve thousand dollars, I believe. And I was way off. So I think that, let's see, the one bid for the fence that's falling down was almost sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars. And the one behind the rental house isn't in terrible shape. It just needs to be cleaned off. The yard needs to be cleaned up and that'll make it look that much better. I would like it to go higher, but at this point, I don't know how we're gonna do that. I mean, again, we're gonna set prioritizations on what needs to be done and maybe that's not one of them.
Now, is the eleven six bid for that fence to also make it higher? And I assume the purpose of making it higher is to protect it from errant golf balls.
Protect the house from golf balls. But we'd have to go quite high to actually protect it. And that brings it into, you know, netting around the tennis courts kind of cost.
Sure.
Which is, you know, hate to bring that up now, but no one's gonna tell it, so.
Yeah.
So it sounds like there's a way forward with a little bit of maintenance expense on the rental house fence to just do, to take the seventeen thousand dollar quote on the fence by fourteen.
Right.
Which would only be a five thousand dollar overage on that piece.
That's, you know, what, forty percent or something like that?
Yeah, but I, I mean, I appreciate you taking a stab at the cost. But I, I, I know things cost more than they may have, your, your last reference point now. And also, you know, it was, it was a bit of a guesstimate, which is fine. That's how we kind of move forward. And now we learn and we say, okay, fences cost a little bit more than we thought. So let me think about that one as plus five thousand, because we know we get to realities and it's not sixteen eight five five seventy, it's, you know, some higher number. And then let's say that the other fence is gonna be tabled.
Yeah.
And the kitchen is gonna be tabled, kitchen table. And then the weather station. Now, this is kind of a different animal, because this would be capital financing, not capital expense, right?
Right.
And, and Jim?
And I believe that in the commercial debt schedule, what do they have in there, Mark? Nine or ten thousand?
Which one?
For a utility cart?
Okay, I don't know the details off the hat, off my head, yeah.
I don't have it in front of me. I think it was about nine or ten. Either way, we're, we're still, you know, saving on not buying a new, new utility cart. And instead getting this weather station. So there it is. I mean, it's a little give and little take.
So it's a switch you've used. Instead of getting your cart, you're getting the weather station, right? But it's still gonna be capital, a non-capital expense or a lease expense, correct?
So the, yeah, the utility cart was scheduled for ten thousand to begin April twenty twenty-three. So this would be pulling it up a little bit, but lower cost. And wasn't there also some savings from that utility cart that was being considered for the fairway mowers? Or was that a separate thing that was just? No, if I recall, that was just an overage. We were saying that's gonna cost more because there's a six percent surcharge being added. And then you also said, hey, I don't really need this utility cart right now. I can do without it, punt it to a future year, because the one's holding up. But this weather station would be a very good thing to have. And it would also help us better utilize our water, which would save on money and obviously save on water, which has environmental costs. So I see a lot of virtue in that one. That one seems more like a no brainer to me. Because even with the pull forward of a smaller expense, it's gonna be effectively in this fiscal year, less spend. And then in future fiscal years, it'll be less spend as well.
Sure.
So I think that one makes sense to me. Let me refresh my memory on. When you say it ended up being sixty-five ninety-two sixteen cents more than the verbal quote, you're not saying it's sixty-five hundred more added to.
Sixty-five hundred ninety-two total.
Is the total. Oh, okay. Yeah. Good. I just wanted to. Yeah. Okay, I think I understand. Does, does other folks have any questions on these?
No, I'm good.
Then I think what we should probably do, so I'll, I'll just close discussion on that if everybody's okay. And then I think what we can do is take separate motions. One on the CapEx items of the boiler and the fences. And so that's one motion. And then a separate motion on the corporate debt capital funding of the weather station as a replacement for the higher cost utility car, right? So we still have a quorum, right? So before we lose it, if we're going to, I'd like to make, or can I ask for a motion on the capital expense items, the boiler and the fence?
So moved.
So move. Any second?
A second.
Any objections? Okay, so I think we are good to have the thousand dollar overage on the boiler and the five thousand-ish dollar overage on the fence by hole number fourteen. And, and then a, can I get a motion on the sixty-six hundred-ish capital financing request for the weather station as replacement for the ten thousand dollar utility cart?
So moved.
And a second?
My second.
And any objections? Okay, so Jim, I think those you can move forward with and Mark, please, you know, support in any way you can.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, of course. And I think if I'm not mistaken, the next order of business is to move into executive session.
Okay, Joe, just before you finish on any other business, I could just bring one thing up. Paul spoke about the October sixth outing.
Oh, yes.
There is actually a dollar expense involved in that. I talked to Mark earlier this afternoon. I think, Mark, you said there's like five hundred dollars. This is actually an event normally we've had in the past. Well, the last time I was here, we had pizza and beer in the restaurant. I think the, the idea this time is to actually, the staff can go to our show to your club. There is an expense of, I think, thirty-five bucks a head, thirty people, thirty-two, whatever it is. We have, we put, there's five hundred dollars in the budget. The expense is gonna be anywhere from a thousand to twelve hundred, so it's gonna be seven hundred dollars more. But I think it's just a good gesture to thank our staff for the type of year we've had. Plus also based upon, you know, the type of year we had fiscally and also the first two months, I think we can afford it, guys. I think it's a good thing to do. I don't know if it needs approval at the board level, but I just wanted to bring it to our attention. Joe?
I appreciate it. I have no objection.
I have no objection. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, we're all good then, right? Okay, we're all good then, right? I will let the, I'll let everybody know. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll move to go into executive session. Do we have any seconds?
I'll second.
Okay, and I'll assume there's no objections. So thanks, everybody. It's just gonna be the five authority members going into the executive session. Mark?
I technically have to, I, I have the meeting started, so I'll go with, I'll be there for the first two minutes and then I'll, I'll exit.
Okay, perfect.
When, when, when everyone is done, when the members are done, you have to come back to this meeting so we can close out this meeting.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for reminding us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, coming back from our executive session, no vote is needed. The only order of business left to do is to vote to adjourn. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
A motion.
Second.
My second. Second, second.
Any objection?
No objection.
Everybody.
No objections.
Thanks, guys.
You will, everybody.
Take care, guys. Have a great night. Bye.